Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the October 7, 2024 Millbrae Special City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM sharp. And City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Councilmember Snyder. Vice Mayor Pappan. Mayor Fang.
Here.
All members of the City Council present.
And for those who are able, please join me and stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. And it's good to see everybody here this evening. And following the certification of July 23, 2024 special elections, now we have two vacancies on the City Council, one in District 2 and also one in District 4. So under the government code section 36512B, the City Council must decide by October 22, 2024 whether to fill these vacancies by appointment or call for a special election for the unexpired term ending December 8, 2026, just a little more than two years from now. The law does not allow for interim council member appointed prior to the March election. The City Council directed staff to open the appointment application for a period of one month, which closed on October 1, 2024 at 5:00 PM. And we're fortunate enough to have a total of six applicant that will receive application from, three from each district, and all applicants were verified to meet eligibility requirements. So tonight, we'll be interviewing these candidates, and each candidate will have a total of 18 minutes, give or take, you know, we'll have a little bit of leeway here, to answer some of those two questions posed by each council member, and a two-minute opening statement at the podium. And if time allows, we'll probably have a one-minute closing for each candidate to leave us with their final thoughts. And to ensure fairness, candidates are being asked to turn off their phones and all the, you know, mobile devices, and are not permitted to watch or listen to the proceeding while waiting in the waiting room. Once the interview is completed, the candidate may remain in the council chamber for the remainder of the time. After the interviews, we will take public comment, depending on how many speakers we have online and in the chamber will determine the time at which for each speaker. However, the speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council members or the candidates nor the public. And I want to assure the public, tonight, there will be no deliberations or decisions being made regarding the appointments tonight, and there will be an opportunity for this discussion tomorrow evening, at which time the public can make public comment regarding this potential appointment then as well. So I want to assure the public that there'll be plenty of time for you to address the council on this item. Now, the City Clerk, we can randomly select the order in which the candidate will be interviewed by district. Hold on one second, Vice Mayor. And we will let everybody knows who is going to be in order of what. In terms of receiving the interview, we will start with District 2 and then move on to District 4 after. Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yes, please. Given our limited timeframe, can I ask that the council members please make our questions short, like less than a minute?
Yes.
That would be fair. Thank you.
And I want to assure the public that each interviewee will receive the same questions from this council, total six questions, and, you know, you have the same amount of time to answer these questions. Any other comment from our council before we get started? Go ahead.
Is there a way when the public comes up and speaks that they could say what district they live in?
You mean the public or the candidate?
The public. When the public is speaking, could they, you know, we've, in the old days, it was your name, and I don't care about your house address, but your street address, because it gives me an idea of what part of Millbrae you come from. But in this case, given that we're filling District 2 and 4, I'd like to hear what districts people, the speakers are coming from.
I think I'll let legal counsel address it, although I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the public are not required to disclose where they live or even their name when they make public comment.
That's correct. The public is not required to disclose where they live. You can certainly ask for that information, but it's up to the speaker whether or not to disclose it.
I mean, I suppose if they volunteer that information, that would be helpful. Yeah, that would be helpful, but they're not required to disclose their personal information. All right. Any other comments or questions from this council before we move forward? Okay. Either S M A, City Clerk, would you please do the Wheel of Fortune for the evening?
The first person to be interviewed for District 2 is Cissy Riley.
Okay. Just hang tight. We'll do the, we'll hang tight, and then we'll determine the order, and then we'll proceed with the interview.
And the second person to be interviewed for District 2 is John Mafara. The last person to be interviewed for District 2 is Donald Kong.
Okay. So at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Mafara and Mr. Kong to wait in the waiting room?
Okay.
Oh, we'll do the Wheel of Fortune for D4 as well. Okay, go ahead.
So for District 4, the interview order for the first person is Paul Sito. The second person to be interviewed is Chris Hackley, and the last person to be interviewed is Bob Newian.
Okay, sounds good. City Attorney? City Attorney and City Manager, I would suppose, at the beginning of this, all three candidates from D4 and the two candidate from D2 will be in the waiting room?
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay, all right. So if the candidate can please make your way to the waiting room, we would appreciate it. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Schneider, who would like to go first? We will, but I just wanted to set the order at which we're going to move on with this. You want to go first? All right. So we'll start with Vice Mayor Pappan, and then we'll go with, you know, Councilmember Schneider after, and then I'll ask the third question in same order until all six questions are answered. The first person taking the podium tonight would be Ms. Cissy Riley. You have two minutes for your opening statement, and then we'll have six questions for you after. And then in the end, depending on the time, I, you know, we're going to make it sure, we're going to make sure everybody had a one-minute closing. How's that? I want to make sure it's fair for everybody. No, no, that, so they've, yeah. You mean the closing? Opening's two minutes. I just want to make sure everybody get, yeah, set the time. So everybody's fair. Yeah. The question themselves. They're going to get six questions. Okay. Try their best to be two minutes. They get, they are being asked the same questions anyway. So they answer, they want to, they really want to answer that question, right? So I thought that would be fair. Okay. So Ms. Riley, when you're ready. Take the podium, please. Let us know when you're ready, and then you'll have a two-minute opening statement. Just let us know when you're ready. Okay, please get closer to the mic, and then, City Clerk, a two-minute clock. Thank you for interviewing with us today.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers and everyone. My name is Cissy Riley. I have been living in District 2 since 1995. I love Millbrae. Besides, volunteering for our local schools and the community events. Over the past year, I locked doors to doors to talk to our neighbors for La Quinta in repurpose. Ensure we protect the best interest and the future for our city. I believe I'm the best candidate to be appointed as the new council member for District 2. My background includes being a professional educator in early childhood development, as well as having careers in real estate and the financial services. As the owner of my own company, I have the flexibility to dedicate the time to serve our community. My strong communications and negotiation skills are important for building stronger relationship with county and other stakeholders. My vision for the future of Millbrae includes public safety, ensure our community is safe and secure for all residents, economic development, promoting growth, not benefit everyone, infrastructure development, focusing on necessary improvements such as the street, maintenance and the public facilities, and commitment to listening to the voice of our city as I always work with the city council members and the city staffs to achieve those goals. Thank you for considering my appointment. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Can we, can we work on the shot clock notification here a little bit? A little thing might be sufficient. Anyway, all right. All right. Thank you for the, thank you, Ms. Riley. Just hang tight for a second. We'll start, everybody's going to start asking question now. We have six questions ready for you. We'll start with Vice Mayor Pappan, and then go with Councilmember Schneider after, and then I'll ask the third question, and in the same order we'll repeat until all six questions are being answered. Okay? Just right here. Just right there is fine.
Right where you are.
Yep. Just right you, right where you are. Vice Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Riley, and thank you for your very inclusive application. Greatly appreciated here. The first question for you is, do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
First, excuse me, one more time, please.
Do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs? We were asked in the last session to pass a resolution regarding the Gaza situation. So do you think that that is appropriate for city councils to do?
So appropriate to city council for, you mean Major G. Ray?
Pardon me?
You mean the Major G. Ray?
No, no, no. This is a resolution in support of ceasefire, which the council did vote on at that time.
Okay.
So do you think, if it comes up in the future, that city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
Okay, so from my own opinion, since I live in Millbrae for over, for almost 30 years, I believe we always Millbrae first. Living in my cities, the small size, I think is too early to talk about ceasefire, but maybe in the future. Now, I think we needed to focus our citizens' needs, our school, our economic. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman and Schneider.
And again, thank you. Great application. Until this year, City Council goes through a goal-setting process. These goals are then built into the city budget. What are Millbrae's current city council goals, and what would you move to the top if you're elected that would then prioritize how we spend the general fund?
So our Millbrae general fund is always tight.
All right. Did you get the question?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Go ahead. Stay close to the mic, and then so the public and also MCTV get to capture your answer for the, for those who are listening online.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Riley. Go ahead.
Thank you. So for our Millbrae, funds always tight, I believe. That's why we, the structure, infrastructure is old, and the water pipe is old. So for our funds, I think we should spend, first of all, is public safety. And we have to develop economic, like, let's say we give like a promotion for bring some new, like, business to our Millbrae generally revenue. Then we can have money spent on our water bill or like infrastructure, fix road or something like that. So for now, I think we should focus on our safety and develop the instruction, develop the economic. Then we can have money to take care of all of those needs. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Riley. I have a question for you. What do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae in short term and in long term? Take your moment.
Okay, short term, I think our Millbrae need urgency to appointed city council member like me. Yes, yes, because I love Millbrae. I love Millbrae. I have the time to contribute, talking to people and solve this problem. That's the short term. Long term, I think if I elected or appointed, I will work with our council members, then protect our Millbrae's benefit such as fight for La Quinta in repurpose, like a council member, Schneider, and Mayor Fang, and Gina. You are my role model. That's why I want to be this city, because I can be one day I can be like you. Thank you. This is my long-term goal.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Ms. Riley, the next question. The city now has district elections. Our Senator Becker is working on new legislation, which may exempt smaller cities like Millbrae from districts. That would mean the next city council could vote to do away with district elections and elect a mayor at large. How do you feel about that, should it come to be?
For divided for five districts, there have a benefit and also have downside. For benefit is for elected official, they can know all those residents like I did before, I door lock for everybody. So I know all those streets, all of those who are live there and how old are. So for the large, then for elected city council will be very tired to, you know, for those things. So I'm not a politician, but I will work with, I will listen to the residents and also work with the city staff, council members, to come up with the best solution and recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman and Schneider.
Thank you. It took five years to get climate change added to the general plan. It took nine years to get a tree ordinance in Millbrae. And I bring up trees because it is the one thing that all of us can do to most immediately flight climate change. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action, as a council member, will you take to slow carbon emissions and make Millbrae resilient to extreme weather events and rising seas?
I love trees. That's why Houston is very famous for trees. So I think we should plant more trees as much as we can. Also, maybe we should go like a green, have more residents use the solar. So now we probably reduce those, those changes. So, and especially now they have promotion for solar, you don't have to pay a penny, and you can get the solar. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Being a council member, being an elected official, it's all about prioritizing how you want to spend your time, what do you focus on, how do you see your role as a future council member, should you become one? And what do you think you want to focus your time and your energy on?
Many questions, huh? Okay. So if I, if I've been appointed, so my, like I mentioned, I'm the owner of my own company. My time is flexible. So I can use my priority to listen to the residents, what do they need, and bring those voice to our meetings, and we come up with the best solution or recommendation to solve this problem. That's, and then I will put, if I've been appointed, I will let you down. I will put my priority for our city and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for your answers. At this time, we will ask that you gave us your final thought. We'll give you a remaining one minute when you're ready, and whatever final thought you want to leave to this council and also to the members of the public, right here in the council chamber, as well as those who are at home watching. Take your time.
Only one minute, Riley?
Yes.
Okay, I speak first. I'm running for city council because I believe that our community deserve a voice, that understand the challenge of starting from nothing and fight for future for our generation, generation and generations, not for us. I'm passionate about support for small businesses like myself, improve access to services for families with special needs, and fostering inclusive thrive environment wherever residents feels valued and heard, very important heard. I'm eager to bring my unique perspective and dedication to our city council. I kindly ask for your support and this opportunity to serve as a champion for fairness, not in my DNA. Together, we can create a city where everyone has access to opportunity and thrive. I looking for the work under, I looking for the work under your supervision and the guidance to bring out the best for our city, build a brighter future for Millbrae.
Ms. Riley?
Thank you for communication. I love you all.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you interviewing with us. That will be the conclusion of your interview process. You're welcome to stay in the council chamber while other interviewees join us momentarily, or you can wait at home. Either way, it's your choice. Thank you, Ms. Riley.
Who's next?
John Mafara. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Mafara. Thank you for joining us. Let me just repeat the order at which events are going to happen tonight.
Yes.
Just let me just explain. Every candidate is going to have a two-minute opening statement.
Okay.
And then each council member will ask questions in turn. Total six questions. We'll start with Vice Mayor Pappan, and then Councilmember Schneider, and then myself, and then in the same order in the second round. At the conclusion of the six questions, you will have a 60-second, one minute, as a closing statement for all of us and also for the members of the public. And when you're ready, we'll start the two-minute time clock.
You let us know. Okay, I set my papers on top of the screen?
Whatever you'd like to do. You have the podium for the next 20 minutes. But when you're ready, and then I'll, City Clerk, we'll start the time.
Hello, everybody, councilmembers, city manager and attorneys and staff. My name is John Mafara. I'm vying for the open council seat in District 2. I have a master's degree in architecture and urban planning from the University of Michigan. I'm registered as an architect in seven states, and I have security clearance in two federal agencies. I have a stellar track record of completing commercial, institutional, and federal projects that include airports, the Federal Reserve, medical procedure rooms, labs, educational, and university work, and retail projects for over 20 years. My experience in with coordinating a variety of projects, meeting, and working with community members and municipalities, maintaining budgets, negotiating projects, costs, acting as owner liaison or construction manager during construction, and working with regional malls, airports, and state and federal agencies. I have a great attention to detail, dedication to excellence, and collaboration with others are the staples of my success and have been a driving force of my career, and I believe would be a good addition to the council. The reason why I'm standing here in front of you is I attended the, the meeting that was held by the, by the, by the county in the rec center when the announcement of the La Quinta project took place. I saw the dejection of my fellow community members and neighbors, and, and the meeting we had one-on-one with the, with the mayor and her surprise look and helplessness. Okay, good.
Thank you, Mr. Mafara, and thank you for respecting the clock.
You bet.
Yep. When you're ready, Vice Mayor Pappan will begin with her first question.
Sure.
Thank you for being a part of our process, Mr. Mafara, and your application is greatly appreciated. The first question is, do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
I believe that the city council has an opportunity to look at its constituency, the fact that they may be hurting, and that communication in regards to what is happening in foreign affairs would be advantageous in response to the community and their concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mafara. Ms. and Schneider, please.
Again, thank you for your application and for applying. Until this year, City Council goes through a goal-setting Until this year, city council goes through a goal-setting process. These goals are then built into the city budget. What are Millbrae's, what are the current Millbrae City Council goals? And what would be the top of your goals that the city should have, should you be elected, and then as it impacts city budget?
I apologize, I'm not familiar with the current city goals. But my, but my interests are in combating drugs and crime, being fiscally responsible and improving our public services and infrastructure. I'm also interested in the city planning of the downtown and the parking requirements. So I believe that our downtown needs a good facelift to improve its appearance and its pedestrian activity. And I believe a parking structure, however number, will improve that as well as improving our parking along Broadway. In regards to the infrastructure, I believe that, you know, we have an aging infrastructure, whether it's water, sewers or our roads. And I believe that paying attention to those will maybe help reduce the water consumption and hopefully reduce water bills for our constituency and improve the services that they are receiving. In regards to combating drugs and crime, I believe that, you know, there's compassion to be had with people that need some services. You know, I'm seeing people in front of Safeway, always giving them a meal or at In-N-Out. And providing them with adequate facilities and attention to their issues would be appropriate. I'm not for the La Quinta project, I never have been. But I believe that's an improper location. But the, I believe that, you know, helping others is a key element of our society. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mafara.
Is staff watching their clock?
Thank you, Mr. Mafara. My question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae, both in short term and in long term?
The greatest challenge is sustaining the housing and the income levels that we are trying to attract in the city. And the primary example of that is I've done a lot of schoolwork of K through 12 and university work. Primarily, the K through 12 stock is vital in attracting families and people that are willing to pay the price for our housing levels that we have here and attract people that are, that belong to the biotech community that we're attracting. So it's vital that our school systems, our infrastructure for the schools and the talent teaching students is vital to be maintained and our level of success is a level of marketing for our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mafara. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mafara. The next question. The city of Millbrae is currently under district elections. Our Senator Becker is working on new legislation that would exempt smaller cities from the district requirements, which would mean the next city council could vote to do away with districts, go back to elections at large and also a mayor at large. Would you support that type of reconstruction here?
I was attended, I attended a few of the meetings where that topic had come up. I feel that asking that question at this point in time is you're spearheading some type of avenue on what direction I may take. I like, I'm involved in, I recently been involved with a couple of elections or candidates in helping them with their process. And the district at large is a system that I feel is important where the local district community has the ability to elect a person that represents them and not relying on the entire Millbrae community for to represent each individual. So I like the districts and I like the rotating mayor, mayor seat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman.
It took five years to get climate change added to the city's general plan. It took nine years to get a tree ordinance. I bring up tree ordinances because they're one of the easiest things to do for climate change. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action, as a council member, will you take to slow carbon emissions and make Millbrae resilient to extreme weather events, including rising seas? All in two minutes.
Rising seas. Well, we are kind of buffered a little bit by rising seas, but we have a reservoir that we, that's near us. And we, in regards to climate change, obviously, reducing our carbon emissions, relying more on public transportation is a benefit, needing people to use more, which in turn, using public transportation, you rely on them being in close proximity to where they work. But not necessarily as a total stopgap. Obviously, there's trains going all the way to South, this is South Bay. So carbon reduction, using a public transportation and obviously, you know, using trees and maintaining our parks where we could avoid, you know, potential fires of that nature.
Thank you.
Mr. Mafara, being an elected official is all about dedicating your time to the area or focuses that are important to not only to you but as well as the people whom you represent. How do you see your role, should you be appointed a council member? And what do you think you would want to focus your time and energy on?
Obviously, you know, being an architect and a city planner or urban planner, we, you know, I'd like to, you know, focus some time towards working with the committees that we have internally on that respect. Again, working hand-in-hand with developers in regards to e-cars, EV cars and charging stations where it could help us improve our carbon footprint. And basically just meeting the demands of the public and what they may, they need and where I could assist them.
Thank you for the answers. So that is the conclusion of all six questions. Now you have one minute to give us your final thoughts and the final comment that you want to leave to us and also to the members of the public when you're ready.
Okay. My strong inner working relationship with promoting organization, with municipalities, institutions and developers during design, rezoning and approval of construction processes of projects have proven me the ability and resource to organize and assist in meeting tight schedules and working with others. I believe that my training, my experience would benefit the city. And if you like, give me the opportunity to do so to meet some of the demands that are here.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mafara. That would be the conclusion of your interview process with us. At this point, you can either stay in the council chamber for the remainder of the time or you're free to go. It's entirely your choice.
Thank you, I'll stay.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
And for the members of the public, you know, I know you already knew that, but if you have a mobile device, would you please make sure it's muted? Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Kuhn.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for interviewing with us this evening. Let me just repeat the order at which events are likely to happen tonight. Each candidate will have an opportunity for an opening statement for two minutes. And then each council member will be asking you questions in turn. We'll start with Vice Mayor Pappan, followed by Councilmember Ash Schneider. Now ask the third question. And then the same iteration will repeat after all six questions is answered. And then at the end of that, you will have a one-minute closing statement that you would like to address the public and the council. Is that pretty clear?
Sure, yeah.
All right, sounds good. When you're ready, the two-minute time clock will begin. You let us know.
I'm ready.
You're ready to go. Here we go.
First, thank you, Mayor Fung, Councilwoman Snyder, Councilwoman Pappan and esteemed members of the public. My name is Donald Kang. I represent District Two. Been a resident of Millbrae for 46 years, on and off. Went to all the schools, Taylor, Mills High, went to UC Berkeley, studied economics, went to law school afterwards. And my purpose of running for council is that I have spent 46 years and I've loved Millbrae, I've watched it change. I've seen the real estate development projects being built. I've seen our housing, our school issues. The reason for my purpose of being here is because I got called in because of La Quinta, La Quinta Project. So I got very involved with the entire recall process and understanding really the voice of the people, the people of Millbrae. We care about what every single resident here has to say. And I want to represent the voice of District Two and the people of Millbrae. I see some of the folks in the audience here are wearing, "We Love Millbrae" shirts, and that's how I feel. It's like I truly love Millbrae and I want to serve the city here to the best of my capacity here. My background is I'm a current owner of a senior care facility. I have 56 beds. And I have this utter respect, we don't call them seniors, we call them elders because we have so much to learn from our elders. I learn respect from our elders, no matter what their ages are. My specialty is actually memory care. So sooner or later, I might have a room for myself at my own facility. We're living longer, but our memories are, you know, a little bit fading there. My other background is I've been a real estate broker. I've built many homes, many projects. My time is up.
Yeah, there'll be a time at the end of this interview process for you to continue. Thank you so much for respecting the clock. Madam Vice Mayor.
Welcome, Mr. Kang, and thank you for your application and time here tonight. Your first question, do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
Do I answer that right now?
Yes.
Okay. Our population in Millbrae is quite international, as we know. We have influences from all over the world. And some of these issues like we see right now in the Middle East, for example, the Palestinian-Israeli issues. We had the Hong Kong protest. So should we weigh in on that? We have many sister cities such as La Serena in Chile, Haoyu in Japan and Mosta in Malta. So we are not just localized, we are international through our city sisters, cities, my apologies. So yes, I think we should have a voice, at least have an opinion because what we say really supports our residents. We might have an opinion, for example, Hong Kong being, having the right to be free, to speak their own voice rather than having China take complete rule. So the people here in Millbrae who are from Hong Kong background do care and have a voice, so I think it's important to support international issues.
Thank you.
Ms. Schneider.
Until this year, city council goes through a goal-setting process. These goals are then built into our general fund. What are Millbrae's current city council goals? And what would be the top goals you would put in place as an elected council member and how that would affect general funds being spent?
Well, as you know, for the year 2024-25, Millbrae has a deficit of over $300,000. And if La Quinta Project had passed, we would add another $700,000 in losses. So that would be a total of a million dollars in the city of Millbrae losses. So the current financial right now is to bring in revenue for the city. So one of my priority goals is to get the P and L statements back up to at least par, if not positive if possible.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you. My question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae in short term and in long term?
Well, long term, we've had on the cover of the Daily Journal, really asking for a three-term council. So these projects that we have such as the Millbrae Plan 2040, the general plan is a long-term plan, it's 16 years out. So a council of me serving for two years is really not adequate. We really need longer terms in order to fully absorb all the different issues that Millbrae has. So currently, I do support the longer term because I understand the complexity of longer-term planning that's needed. Short term, really, there's a lot of issues right now such as the Office Depot development. That's really revitalizing parts of downtown on the northern end of Broadway right here. So I think that project needs to be moved along. I don't know the exact process of it, but I've watched it being abandoned for so many years, other than having a Halloween shop. But hopefully, we use it for more than that.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kang. Probably have to check your facts on the deficit there. I think the city manager went a little.
Right here.
Okay. And Office Depot will be taken down very soon. So the next question, how do you feel about district elections? Our Senator Becker is working on legislations to exempt smaller cities from the district requirements, which would mean the next city council could vote to do away with districts and even go to a mayor at large?
I would have to disagree with that. I think any organization, if you look at corporations, we have a CEO, but we also have a board of directors. And their background has a huge impact on different visions, different insights, based on everyone's different backgrounds. So my background would contribute hopefully in a different way than Councilwoman Snyder or even yours, Diane, Gina Poppins, Councilwoman Poppins' background. So I think having a council is quite important because we all have a different background and input and education level to contribute.
I don't think you understood the question.
That's his answer.
Okay, that's your answer, okay.
Yep, all right. Ms. Schneider.
This is a complicated one. It took five years to get climate change into the general plan. It took another nine years to adopt a tree ordinance. And I bring up trees just as one example of something that we can all do for carbon reduction. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action would you, as a council member, take to slow carbon emissions and make Millbrae resilient to extreme weather events and rising seas?
Well, I really can't control the rising seas. Even I think Millbrae would have a challenge controlling the rising seas. However, there are offsets that we can all do to contribute. For example, I know that PG&E had cut back on the subsidies on solar panels. So having solar panels, having clean energy in that manner, I think would be beneficial for the city right there. We know that right now during this hot weather, we have incredible usage of electricity just for air conditioning. If we had clean energy to offset some of that usage, we wouldn't have blackouts, brownouts, other usage. We have lots of roads and open space between ourselves and the airport. I don't know if it's possible, but maybe solar panels to support clean energy in that direction and using some of the open space over there. That's an idea right there. One of the other environmental issues is water runoff. So having proper water containers to collect the water. So during heavy rains, maybe permeable driveways or roadways to try to absorb some of the lost water instead of having it just go into wastewater directions right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kuhn, Mr. Kuhn. Being an elected official and council member, it's all about prioritizing, setting priorities. How do you see your role? How do you see your role as a council member, should you be appointed? And what do you think you would want to focus your time and your energy on?
Sure. I've probably committed about 20 to 40 hours. I own my own companies, my own businesses, so my time is very, very flexible. Some of the committees that I have expressed interest in are the Sister Cities Commission, the Senior Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, and Economic Vitality Advisory Committee, based on my background. There are other committees, such as Community Enhancement, Cultural, Parks and Recreation, and Youth Advisory, that's also available, but I've expressed my main interest on those few committees.
Okay, thank you for all the answers to all six questions. At this point, we ask that you have a one-minute closing statement for us and for the public. On your mark when you're ready.
First, I want to thank again the public for showing so much interest and showing up for this council job opening interview right here. I want to thank all the council members and Mayor Feng. I've followed all of you since, literally, Councilwoman Pappin. I think we're in the same neighborhood, so I followed you for, literally, I'm going to say, I don't want to give away our ages, but it's been over 30 years. So I followed a lot of the members of the city for decades, and I think it's my turn. It's really my honor to give this opportunity to serve back to the city after being a resident here for so long and taking advantage, really, I'm the one who's taken advantage of the city of Millbrae by having a great school system, great downtown, opportunities to have some great dim sum and restaurants, you know, and we had a Trader Joe's right here, so 24-hour, I always say Millbrae is 24-hours. We have 24-hour Safeway, oh, 24-hour Walgreens. We have, amazing, I mean, the city is fantastic.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kuhn. I appreciate your time. That is the conclusion of your interview process. At this point, you can either stay in the chamber or you're free to go. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Just want to let the crowd settle down for a bit. Thank you. Thank you for joining us in this interview process, Mrs. Sito. It's good to see you back in this chamber again. And I just wanted to reiterate the process of the interview tonight. Each candidate will have a two-minute opening statement, and then each council member will ask you one question. We'll start with Vice Mayor Pappin, and then followed by Councilmember Ann Schneider, and then I'll ask the third, and then in the same order until all six questions are being answered. And then at the conclusion of it, you will have one minute for a final statement for us and for the public. And on your mark, when you're ready, we'll start the clock for your opening statement. And again, thank you so much for joining us in this interview process, Mr. Sito.
We're timing you too.
All right, well, thank you very much for welcoming me to the chamber, and it's kind of nostalgic for me, so a lot of sentiments come into this, because I at one time dedicated a few years to this too. So thank you, Mayor Anders, and Councilmember Snyder and Pappin. Anyways, I'd like to introduce myself a little bit. So I moved to Millbrae, I was raised in San Francisco, I have two children, they're grown adults. My older son, as is Noah Sito, he's married, and he actually recently had a grandson, and he was raised in the Millbrae School District. He's a medical residence over in the University of New Mexico in Anesthesiology, trying to finish up his medical career there, or started off. My younger son is actually here, Zachary Sito, and he's a mechanical engineer for Tesla Corporation, and also raised in the Millbrae School District. So I'm just really proud of him. And I guess I gave him the background, because Millbrae has actually served our family well. I moved to Millbrae from San Francisco, actually from Daly City, lived in Daly City for a number of years, about 10 years. Never thought about politics, moved to Millbrae, I fell in love with it, and still in love with it. And when I started at Millbrae, I met some families, some friends, played soccer in YSO, and then they really, I thought, wow, this place is great, I just love it. Live in Daly, well, I almost said the name of the city, but lived in another city for a number of years, and never thought about getting involved. When I came to Millbrae, I felt, wow, this is kind of nice, small community, met a lot of friends, and then, and got involved. I started with Park and Recreation Commission, and because I love sports and activities and open fields, so I started with that, and then when a position came open for council, I said, oh, pitch in, see what you can help, what to improve. So that's what I'm doing right now, just kind of trying to come back and just trying to improve and see what I can do to make the city a nicer place once again. I stopped.
Mr., yeah, thank you, Mrs. Sito. Thank you for respecting the clock. And I assure you, there'll be another minute at the end of the conclusion of all six questions for you to address the public again. Thank you so much. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sito. Nice to see you here, and thank you for your application, greatly appreciated. First question, do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
No, that's a straight-up answer. You know, we're a local government agency, we don't need to get involved with outside, you know, there's a lot of issues in this world, you know, we just kind of trying to help with what we can directly with our local community. And I think, you know, I mean, I have grievances with a lot of things that happens in this world, but I try to kind of keep it local, because that more directly affects our residents and our community. And besides, I think our time and energy should be channeled to our community, because that's what we can help with, so.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
Until this year, city council goes through a goal-setting process, and these goals are then built into the general fund for the following year. What are Millbrae's current city council goals, and what would be the top of your goals, should you be elected, and how would that fit into the general fund?
Yeah, I think, I think some of the goals for the city, from what I read, it includes just development and finances, meaning, you know, making some money and then able to pay the bills and maybe keeping the bills lower and something more manageable. So in terms of my background, I'm in finance, so I kind of enjoy finance and understanding the budget and projections, forecasts, performance to plan, quarterly results. So to me, it all gets coincided, because money is a medium to actually create opportunities and vision, because, you know, if you don't have money, it's hard to really develop or have plans or vision for the city or anywhere else. So I deal with that routinely at work, for my 30-plus years in finance. So, you know, to me, I think that's actually the interesting and fun part about city council, and that's partly what I miss. I did mostly private financing, like, you know, like construction projects and shopping centers, import exporters, but I don't deal too much with the public. So I thought that my prior experiences here at City of Millbrae back in 2008, 2011, I think, it actually gave me an exposure to it, and I loved it. I thought that, wow, this is very interesting, it's very different than public, I mean, private financing. So I think the financing is part of key, and the vision is to kind of continue the same trend that we've been having, which is for development and to attract more money and create more opportunities, and maybe to turn in some money, make some money along the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sito. What do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae, both in short term and in long term?
Yeah, I thank you for the question. So what I see the challenge is unity. You know, I think across America, there's a lot of polarization, I don't think it's very healthy for us. I see that kind of trickle down to the state and now regional, and then to the local level. I think we can do a better job, and I think the shelter over at La Quinta and just the whole issue just is very divisive, and I think it's not conducive for building a city that kind of want to be on the same page and kind of moving forward together, and just being respectful to each other. I think that, for me, that is something that I'd like to see us kind of move forward with and just kind of move on, so that we can develop something more cohesive. I think the long-term part, what I would like to see is more collaboration between the city and actually the school district. We do have, we do have some that we kind of overlap, we have different jurisdiction and/or directions for it. However, I like to be supportive of each other, and that's part of the reason I came to City of Millbrae, is because my kids were successfully raised here, I love the city, I love what we do for each other, I love the small community feel for it. It's hard to replace in any city in the peninsula, except for Millbrae.
Thank you, Mrs. Sito. Hold on one second.
Yes.
Could you allow follow-up of something the candidate said? We haven't yet.
We haven't gotten to that, so we're just going to ask the same set of questions, and then we can deliberate tomorrow, and then I'm sure the candidate will be back at that time. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sito. How do you feel, we are currently in district elections. Senator Becker is working on new legislation, which would exempt smaller cities from districts, which would mean the next city council could actually do away with districts or even go to a mayor-at-large. What are your thoughts?
I, you know, my preference is a city-at-large. That's the time when I campaigned, it was a city-at-large, you know, and the reason I did it was because it wasn't, it wasn't Samhail, you know, it wasn't Redwood City, it was Millbrae. We had about 20,000 people, 20, 23,000 now, let's say, and I thought it was manageable. I think that, you know, maybe a good, maybe 30,000, 25, 30,000, maybe up to 50, if you want to do a good job to campaign, to kind of spend time and actually kind of get to know people. I think that is manageable. The district election is very confusing. When I came here, I thought, okay, three candidates, which district, what are the boundaries, who's, you know, we all protect the interests of the city of Millbrae. So in my opinion, I think that, you know, we're small enough to be a district election and also to be a citywide election. That's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
It took five years to get climate change added to the general plan. It took nine years to get a tree ordinance. I bring up trees, because they're one of the things that we can all do to slow carbon generation. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action, as a council member, will you take to slow climate emissions and make Millbrae resilient to extreme weather events, including things like rising seas?
Yeah, you know, there's a lot of discussion about that. I don't want to get into specifics, just because I haven't really read up on the specifics, but in general, I do believe in clean energy, climate change, I mean, I think, I don't know why we are in denial, honestly, you know. So I think, by all means, we should be a sustainable city, we should be, and I've always felt that we were, actually. I'm just hoping that we will continue in that path to make it more so. Before, I remember, we used to have a, we actually have a gestational mechanism in the, which we invested a number of years ago, that actually, that actually kind of processed grease oil, and then actually helped it to generate energy, so it subsidizes our energy usage. I mean, so we were trying to be in the forefront of it, and I always enjoy that novelty. And also, you know, it's not, I just feel that that's important. Matter of fact, it's critical, because, you know, I don't think we want to, we want, we want to be a part of the solution to a larger worldwide problem that from some, whatever reason, that some people are in denial.
Thank you.
Mr. Sito, as you already knew, because you've been in this role before, being a council member is all about focus and priorities. How do you see your role as a council member, should you be appointed? And what do you think you would want to focus your time and your energy on?
Yeah, you know, I thank you for the opportunity to actually talk about this. You know, I think, I think my role is more of creating unity, creating a sense of community. I think that I've always felt that City of Millbrae is a small city. I think that we're very fortunate to have a setup that we have, that all the schools go into one middle school, all elementary schools go to one middle school, and then afterward to the same high school. My kids benefit from it, that's really what I miss. Is that really small-town feel, the ability to sit in this council and talk to people, or to be able to run into your council member, or to be able to talk to the principal, who's actually a neighbor of yours? I think, I think all these things is what I hope to recreate or to create more of, because I feel that we are all part of this city of Millbrae. And just to add to that, I feel that in the city of Millbrae, we are just very fortunate, and I like to be able to reinvest in that, so that we can move forward and to be more unified. We can disagree, it's okay to disagree. We like to hear your thoughts, but at the same time, once a decision is made, let's just kind of move forward and let's try to work through it. And I think that that's what I hope that we can accomplish. But it's not simple, right? I mean, it, you know, takes some effort, but I think that's important to me, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Mr. Paul Sito. At this point, we want to give you an opportunity for a final comment, and when you're ready, we have one minute.
One minute, right, okay.
Yes, sir.
So I like to say that my hopes, I know I'm coming back from a nearly 15-year absence, and the reason I'm coming back is because, at the time when I was, when I was on council, I had young kids, I just really thought my priority was my family, I didn't go for reelection. I came back because I'm retired, and that now I have the time, energy, and interest in doing so. I love the city of Millbrae, I love people, I love to see how you guys are doing, and I'd like to just continue to nurture that, because I always felt that the ones that are given more responsibilities, the ones that are the ones that should actually reinvest in other people. And I feel that I'm at that life stage, if you will, to be able to, and time to do so. I have no political ambition, I just want to help the city of Millbrae. I don't have any interest in, in, or ambitions to move further, this is it for me. I love the city that I work in, and I.
And we thank you for respecting the clock. Thank you so very much. Thank you, Mrs. Sito. You choose, you can stay in the chamber for the remainder, or you're free to go. Thank you so much. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Chris Hackley.
Hi, all right, testing, we're good? Yeah.
And I just wanted to reiterate the process of the interview tonight. We will have a two-minute opening statement for you, so you can address the public and this council. After the first initial address of two minutes, each council member will ask you one question. There'll be a total of six questions. We'll start with Vice Mayor Pappin on my left, and then followed by Councilwoman Ann Schneider on my right, and then I'll ask the third question, and then we will repeat this process until all six is answered, and then at the end of it, you will have one-minute opportunity to address the public and this council. And when you're ready, on your mark, we'll start the two-minute introduction.
All right, let's do it. So hi, everyone, my name's Chris Hackley. I live in District Four, and I'm running for the council position there. So a little bit about me, so I think the two main things that are relevant to this is I'm both a scientist and an entrepreneur, and that's, I think, a different skill set than most of the other people who are running for positions here. And what I think in particular is useful about this is that as a scientist, you have to. to wade through tons and tons and tons of data, right? And you have to figure out what is the ground truth of this data. And in particular, something that I'm particularly interested in learning more about how government functions is there's so much information, right, that goes on and happens in the government. And yet, I feel like I've spent maybe five or six hours looking into it, and frankly, I can't, still can't understand what's really going on. What are people doing? Why are they doing it? How is this, has this worked? Has this not worked? What does the council care about? What don't they? There are some high-levels things that I've seen that make sense, but then when I dig in a little further, it's either you're diving into a 300-page report, right, which is great. That's really cool that someone's done that. But I have to be honest, for a non-expert like me, I have expertise in my own areas but not this, it's really hard for me to understand that. And so I think that's something that I would, you know, like to see happen, whether it's me or someone else on the council, is working towards how can we communicate information more clearly, right, to the public? Because I think that would really help get people excited, and that's something I care about. Then as an entrepreneur, the second half of that, right, data is great, but what do you do with it? How do you choose the things that matter most, right? And also, how do you ignore your own biases to figure out what matters most to other people?
Okay. Thank you so much for respecting the clock. At this moment, just stay close to the mic, and then we'll start with Vice Mayor Papen, followed by Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
Thank you, Mr. Hackley, and thank you for being a part of this process and your application. Greatly appreciated. Your first question is, what do you think about city councils weighing in on foreign affairs?
So again, this might be one of my own personal biases, but I generally don't understand the purpose of it in terms of Millbrae is a town of about 20,000 people. America has 330 million people, right? I can understand why someone would want to do it. I, you know, generally don't like to make 100% conclusive statements. I understand it, but if you want my personal feeling on it, I think there are better ways to use the city council's time.
Thank you.
Until this year, city council goes through a goal-setting process. These goals are then built into our general fund. What are Millbrae City Council current goals? And if elected, what would be the top goals you would want the city to spend our general fund on?
So this is, thank you for asking this question because this is something that I think you could kind of tell I was leading to, right? I found this information online, and I like it. It does make sense, but it's at such a high level that frankly, I don't understand. Like, one of them was, and I'm going to have to paraphrase and butcher this, right, but set some sort of housing design standards. And then there was a follow-on that this could help with giving the government the, some ability to do something, right? And I don't remember what, and I'm sorry, but the idea was, I didn't get it. What, like, I understand, okay, that you're, you know, there's something going on with you want houses to make a certain way, and I tried clicking and clicking and clicking, and where I ended up with was that 300-page report which had the whole vision for Millbrae 2050, which is awesome, right? But all I wanted was the answer to my question, what are you really trying to do here at a high level, right? But just a little bit more than we passed, you know, we want to create some ordinances that will enforce, you know, housing, architecture, standards, right? Does that satisfy this question?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hackley, what do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae in short term and also in long term?
So there may be some bias again here, but as a scientist, right, biotech has had a boom during COVID and is now going through a winter. I think Millbrae has, you know, basically, being next to South San Francisco, Millbrae has an opportunity, right? I think most of you have seen that there are some labs that are already going in and some of the streets down there. I do believe that biotech is going to come back in a big way in the latter half of the 2020s. So I think what challenges Millbrae really has is how do they navigate? I think that, I think Millbrae's going to grow and grow, you know, a non-trivial amount. It's a really nice place. It's centrally located. You've got tech and biotech, which are the two big value creators here, right? Saying anything about anybody else's job, but those are the ones that are creating the most money, right? And I think what Millbrae has is the challenge of many different paths that could go and many different opportunities that are currently present, right? And I think figuring out which one do people want, right? Not just me with my own biases, right? But what do people really want to see happen with Millbrae, right? I think that's both the opportunity and challenge that Millbrae has. And so, because I didn't quite answer it, short term, I think figuring out what does Millbrae want to be? Longer term, how does it get there?
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hackley. Next question. Millbrae currently has district elections. Our Senator Becker is working on new legislation which would exempt smaller cities from the district requirements, which would mean the next city council would have the opportunity to vote to do away with districts and even go to a merit large. What is your opinion on this?
That's interesting. I've never heard that before, and so I'm guessing that you can have positives and negatives from that, right? The positives being that presumably the people who cared would get appointed. Potentially, the negatives are that there, you know, everybody has biases, right? And it could end up being that the council is basically one whole group of friends. And, you know, you run into the problem there of you could be missing some good ideas, right? Just because I like working with my friends too, right? But we generally think more similarly than differently, right? So personally, I have to be honest, I don't think I'm qualified enough in all the different ways this could affect, but my gut feeling is that even if you sacrifice a little bit of efficiency, I think it'd still be worthwhile to ultimately let the citizens weigh in on who they want and on district council. That's my answer.
Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
It took five years to get climate change added to the city's general plan, that big O document you talked about. It took nine years to get a tree ordinance, and I bring up trees as that's one thing that cities and residents can do to reduce carbon. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action, as a council member, would you take to slow climate, carbon emissions? Sorry. What actions would you take to slow carbon emissions? And what would you do to make Millbrae more resilient to extreme weather events, including things like sea level rise?
Yeah, so those are great questions, and I'll definitely say at the last council meeting, as I was hallucinating, there was talk about the two-stroke leaf blowers, right? I think that's an easy win, just as an example, right? Now, it's, you know, as there were very valid points brought up, that you don't want to drive people out of business, right? But also, two-stroke motors are inefficient, right? That's just the scale of you have a small engine, and it just can't be as efficient as a bigger engine, or now that we have the technology, batteries, right? So I think things like that, where you're not asking the city to invest hundreds of millions of dollars because it doesn't happen, right? But areas where there are these small changes that could add up to something big, I think that's pretty interesting. Something that I frankly don't know about but would be interesting is, is there anything that can be done with SFO? Are there any gains to be gained there? Maybe not, I don't know. And then ultimately, the other big one, and again, the very large document that was very detailed, is had plans for sea level rise, right, and how to combat that. And that actually kind of blew me away. I couldn't believe that there were people who were actually thinking about that. Like, it makes so much sense because guess what? Part of Millbrae is on a marsh, right? And if sea levels grow up and get higher, that's going to flood, and that's not going to be good, right? So I definitely think I would encourage, from what I saw, again, I'm not an expert there, but it seemed like there were very well-thought-out plans into going about how to potentially mitigate sea level rise because it's almost certain to happen, right? We're starting to see it with, you know, even you can look at this crazy heat wave, right? Like, weather is getting more erratic. It's just, that's the way it's going to be. And I think planning for a sea level rise is very smart. From what I saw, I wouldn't change anything about that, but just keep doing what the city's doing. It seemed really smart to me.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Hackley, how do you see your role should you be appointed council member? And what do you think you would want to focus your time and energy on?
Yeah, so I think my role, some of you may have gotten it, is that I don't have expertise in terms of I'm not a developer, I'm not a banker, right? What I would really like to spend my time on is figuring out how can we, number one, engender trust with government, right? What strategies additionally can be done? And I feel like Millbrae is a nice, a nice place to start experimenting with some of these strategies. Number two, I'd really focus on figuring out what services do people really care about, right? What do they want? What do they not want? Because one thing I've also seen is that Millbrae is, you know, constantly looking for money, at least from what I've heard in the council meetings, which I understand, right? It's hard, and I've been there, I've done a startup, and trust me, I've hounded more people for money than I'd like to think about. But I think there's a side, you know, where you have to be efficient with what you're doing, and I'm not saying people aren't, but just asking the question there. And then I think lastly, it would really be trying to figure out how can the government be better about being accountable to itself or essentially giving us the citizens the tools to hold it more accountable? And again, walking the line of not saying that people are doing anything bad or wrong right now, right? I'd say you could equally flip it around and say, how can the government show off all the cool things that it's doing, right? All the successes that it's having, all in that, again, in that huge document, right? There's a lot of stuff that's really cool. I mean, if you have time to read it, I would. It's really neat. But, you know, that stuff, that takes hours, and people don't always have that. That's definitely something that I've gotten drilled into me in my professional life is that, you know, you'd hope that people would have the time to sink hours into something, and really they don't. People here are an exception, right? There are 20-something thousand people living in Millbrae, and we have maybe 30 or 40? Which is great, right? But that's like 0.1% of all the people living here. So I'm really happy that everybody's shown up. That's awesome. But how do we get the rest of the people involved, right? Or at least to care even just a little more, right? So that's what my vision would be. It would primarily be being, how can we figure out new ways to communicate? How can we figure out new ways to gender excitement and realistically be a support for some of the other members who frankly have more experience than I do?
All right. Thank you for your answers, and then that, I believe that's six questions. And at this time, we want to give you one minute as a closing statement. Just any thoughts that you want to leave to the public and to this council?
Yeah.
When you're ready.
I'd just say, thank you so much for giving me the time and giving me the interview, and I'd say, you know, in closing, I kind of made my argument, right? I have a different skill set than I think a lot of other people here. I think there are some benefits to that. And I'd say overall, just as, on a personal note, you know, I've been impressed with the people that I've met working in the city government so far. It's been a really pleasant, if hopefully this isn't too expensive, but it has been a pleasant surprise that so many people really care, and there are really good people working here. And so I'd say that's overall what I'd want to leave people with. There really are people that care, right? And it's up to us to try to help, and, you know, if this role fits, great. If there's something else I can do, very happy to do it. Anyways, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hackley. And that's the conclusion of your interview process. You're welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go. those who wish to speak at the end of the interview process, please turn in your speaker's lip, and we will do our best to accommodate everybody at their podium. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Bob Nguyen. And let me just, first of all, I want to thank you for your application and the time that you dedicated to us and to the public tonight. This interview process will begin with a two-minute opening statement from yourself to the public and to us. After that, there'll be six questions. We'll start with Vice Mayor Papen, followed by Councilwoman Ann Schneider, and then the third one will be mine. And then we'll repeat that same order until all six questions are being answered. At the end of that process, you will have one minute to address this council and the public. And when you're ready, on your mark, we have two-minute begin.
Good evening, council members and Millbrae residents. My name is Bob Nguyen, and I am deeply honored to be here today. I'm seeking this opportunity to represent District Four on the city council. I lived here from Millbrae for over eight years now, and during this time, I've grown immensely and connected with the city and its people. As a successful business owner in the field of medical device development and a family man raising a young family, my roots are firmly planted in Millbrae. My personal investment to this community runs deep, and it is a great dedication that I aim to ensure the voices of Millbrae residents are heard, especially in District Four. My recent involvement in La Quinta project has given me invaluable ground-level experience in working directly with residents in this issue. The matter to them, and I didn't sit on the sidelines, I actively engaged in my neighbors and listened to their concerns, fighting to make sure their voices are heard in critical discussion. It is through this process I realized the importance of representation, and I stand here today to and want to continue that voice in the community. As a business owner and a professional electrical engineer, I have a proven ability to break down complex systems into manageable parts, communicate that effectively to different stakeholders and deliver results. Running a business is highly regulated environment, has taught me how to balance competing priorities, develop innovative solutions, and execute strategies with precision. These skills are directly transferable to public service, where I will work tirelessly with the council members, staff, and community to address the challenges we face. I am not only here to serve, but also to ensure that Millbrae is guided by a clear and strategic vision. My vision for Millbrae is centered around four critical pillars. It is prioritizing economic development and fiscal responsibility to keep our city thriving. Three, enhance the public safety and protect our residents. And four, ensure proper representation specifically to District Four, so every resident's voice is truly heard and considered decisions that affect their lives.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. There will be time at the end of this interview process for you to, if you're not done, to address the public again. So at this time, we'll start with Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen, for taking part in this process and your applications. Greatly appreciated. Your first question, do you think city councils should weigh in on foreign affairs?
This is a challenging problem, like, this is just my personal belief, but I don't believe that running a city requires that level of, I guess, decision-making. We're concerned about how the city is run, the infrastructure and everything, and all the other things around national media and all that. I feel it is better to be able to just filter that out and focus on Millbrae. I believe Millbrae comes first, and we already, like with social media, everyone knows that with social media, everything is very divisive now. What we don't need is more divisiveness. We need more unity, and focusing on the city and what it needs is the key, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Councilwoman Ann Schneider.
Until this year, city council goes through a goal-setting process. These goals are then built into our city budget. What are Millbrae's current city council goals? And what would be the top of your goals if elected? And what would be the top of your goals if elected? And how would that fit into the general fund?
So my understanding of the general plan, this is just me--
General fund.
General fund, okay. But this is me reviewing the general plan on how, and by the way, like, the general plan is the public data. I don't know if there's an updated copy, but reviewing the general plan, where I think the priorities are for Millbrae, there's threefold. One is the infrastructure, like, and this is just, this is not even from the general plan. This is from people that I talked to during, just all the, like, La Quinta, what have you. And infrastructure is key, like, how do we manage traffic? How do we manage the parking? What do we do with land use? And that's something that my number one priority is to focus on that. Number two is the fiscal responsibility and business development or economic development. That's key, because we know from La Quinta that, for example, TOT could be seven or eight percent loss if we decided to go the other direction. And having that fiscal discipline on top of business creation is key for us. We need to be able to attract businesses and be able to expand our tax base, and the other way doesn't seem like the correct direction. And three is public safety. We have to be able to, we have to be able to ensure that when people go downtown specifically, that they feel safe and they feel like they want to be out in Millbrae. Like, I know for sure that, like, with my young family, I want to feel safe when I go out to downtown and be able to patron the businesses. So I think that's the first three, and then even a fourth would be proper representation. Like, we know what happened to La Quinta, like, the voices of Millbrae initially was not heard. And we want to be able to have the voices heard, so that outside entities or interests understand that we have to go through Millbrae first before their decisions are made.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. My first question is, what do you see as the greatest challenge for Millbrae, both in short term and in long term?
So the greatest challenge, and this is just reviewing the general plan, I don't want to reinvent the wheel, the general plan does go over this. We understand that we're one of the fastest-growing cities in the region, if not the fastest. And that needs to be carefully balanced. How we manage land use, how we manage our taxes, how we manage everything around that. And what I've learned from this whole process on top of just reading through the documents is that everything affects each other, nothing happens in isolation. And that's the biggest challenge, is that how do we grow our city, but also manage the traffic, for example, on El Comune Real and Millbrae Avenue? Those are, like, I don't have all the answers, but those are things on my mind that when I read through the plan and I go through all the information on public setting, and as well as talk to people, that is what concerns me. And I feel that, like, that's the top priority, is to understand, as well as to be able to implement a right strategy for managing this infrastructure and growth. So that's number one. Number two is fiscal responsibility. We know with La Quinta that if we don't, or we're not responsible, we can lose the very fiscal responsibility that we have, that we've been maintaining actually for these last couple of years. So I feel that having that type of discipline and also attracting businesses is key. And three is just the public safety I mentioned earlier, be able to have all that figured out, and then work with the Sheriff's Department, and work with, like, of course, new processes, and be able to have new technologies, be able to accommodate, like, new techniques for safety is the key, I believe.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Vice Mayor.
All right about that. Mr. Nguyen, next question. Millbrae currently has district elections. Senator Becker is working on new legislation that would exempt smaller cities from the district requirements, which would mean the next city council would have the opportunity to vote to do away with districts and even attempt a mayor-at-large. How do you feel about that?
I would agree with that. I think, given our city size and the way it's divided up, I don't think it's an efficient method to be able to represent our voices. We're just literally too small. We have to be able to have a solution that works for the city. And this is, I don't believe in this one-size-fits-all strategy that potentially is imposed on us. We need to work based on the situation per city. And I do agree, I think at large, and at-large mayor even, would work better for us.
Thank you.
Ms. Schneider.
It took five years to get climate change added into the general plan. It took nine years to enact a tree ordinance. And I bring up trees as that's one of the easier things that we can all do to reduce carbon emissions. We still do not have a climate resiliency action plan. What action, as a council member, will you take to slow carbon emissions and make Millbrae resilient to extreme weather events and rising seas?
I do agree with the tree ordinance. I think that, I can reflect on this from personal experience, like, when PG&E went in and removed our trees, there was adverse effects I think even PG&E did not predict. We just got way more wind, more particulate matter. I can tell you this, like, I'm just coughing, this is anecdotal, but I'm coughing way more. So having, at least, I'm not sure of a tree ordinance, but at least the ability to do a study and understand the effects of changing the environment should be part of our plan.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Next question is, how do you see your role should you be appointed council member? And what do you think you would want to focus your time and your energy on?
So my role is working with the other five council members to come up with policies and directions so that the city can execute based on our directions. And it goes without saying, right, we have to, like, work together as a team and collaborate so that we come up with a resolution that works for everyone. If there's anything in particular or specific you want to address, I can do that, but that's kind of my approach with that question.
Okay. Sounds good. So that would be the conclusion of all six questions. At this time, we ask that you give us a closing statement. Should you have anything you want to address? We have one minute.
So I was a write-in candidate two years ago. And the reason why I decided to run, so just as a full disclosure, I was never interested initially into just making a career out of politics. Zero. What I wanted to do was make sure that our city was going in the right direction. And when I got a phone call from my wife about situations that happened two years ago, I decided to step up and speak on behalf of District Four in particular. I felt very strongly about it, because at that time, the direction and all the policies that I think I saw online was not the right way. And this is the same reason why I am interested now, is because I want to ensure that continuity. I want to make sure that every voice with District Four, and I met a lot, and I met a lot of these people, I talked to a lot of these people, the voices are heard. And you'd be surprised how common that voice is. This is from ground level, door-to-door knocking, talking to everyone. Like, I don't believe in shortcuts, and this is exactly what I did, especially recently, and even two years ago. So I really appreciate your support on this.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. And that concluded your interview process. You're welcome to stay. At this time, we will take public comment. We will begin with the council chamber, and then we have, I believe, one hand raised online. Mr. Nguyen, please take a seat. Thank you so much. Okay. I have five speaker's lips right here, three minutes each. We have five. Okay. Why don't I give you, why don't I give you 60 seconds?
Can we--
Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes. All the applications, the written applications are online. So I encourage the public to please take a look at the applications that each of the applicants submitted. We've read them all, and they're very enlightening, so, enlightened. So please, a part of this process is not only the oral interviews and the questions, but also the applications as submitted. This is a very, we're trying to make it as very public as possible in this process. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. So at this time, I have five speakers in the council chamber, and I also have one hand raised online. We'll start with the in-chamber speaker, and then followed by the online speaker. The first public speaker is Mr. Tom Brocher. Broker. I remember you said that. Followed by Jean Wong after. Three minutes.
Good evening, council members and city staff. My name is Tom Broker, and I'm a resident of District Two. I live right next to the Millbrae Pancake House. I'm very grateful for all the folks who have offered their candidacy as replacement council member. I appreciate their willingness to serve the city of Millbrae. However, I wish to express my disappointment with the recall of my council member, Angelina Cahalan, in a process that many of us consider to be unwarranted, divisive, and profoundly flawed, if not undemocratic. I urge you to use your selection of replacement council members as an opportunity to restore unity and to promote healing of our divided community. I urge you to carefully consider selecting candidates from this perspective. In my view, bringing our city back together must be our top priority. Homelessness remains a serious problem, not only in Millbrae, but also in San Mateo County. I urge you to consider candidates who will not only help us to address our homelessness problem, but who will also help us restore our tattered relationships with the county government. I remain convinced that Millbrae must do its share to address this nationwide problem. I am also convinced that the city council could and should do its utmost to restore civility to Millbrae and to heal our divisions. We need your leadership to remind us all of our shared values, our shared hopes, and our shared dreams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brokaw. Ms. Jean Wong. Followed by Mr. John McAuliffe.
Good evening, Mayor Fang. Councilmembers Papen, Schneider. My name is Jean Wong, and a resident of District Four for 26 years. I would like to thank all the candidates tonight for submitting their applications to be considered for District Two and for, uh, District Four council member seats. While they all have very impressive education and professional experiences, none of them, except for Mr. Sito, have any prior experience in local government or policymaking. They also did not see from the other candidate applications that they have held any appointed positions on Millbrae committees or commissions, or any elected positions, such as the Millbrae Elementary School District Board of Education, or are active participants in local community service organizations, such as the Lion or Rotary Clubs. With so many candidates interested in serving on Millbrae City Council, it would be appropriate for Millbrae to hold a special election in March of '25 in lieu of any council appointments. Residents in District Two and Four have the right to elect candidates of their choice to represent them on city council for the next two years. Some residents would argue that a special election would cost money, and that appointments would be more expedient. I would argue instead that the cost of a special election is the cost of democracy. Millbrae Council and residents have already shown that they are willing to support such expenditures with its legal actions backing Article 34. A special election is the best way to ensure that the rebuilding of Millbrae City Council is democratic, objective, and transparent, and will shut down any claim of personal biases in the appointment process. Holding a special election does not mean that the time spent tonight on candidate interviews is wasted. Instead, it is an investment in the future, providing a golden opportunity for potential candidates to introduce themselves to District Two and Four voters in preparation for the March special election. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jean. Mr. John McAuliffe. Followed by Gina Miranda.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council members, for having us tonight. For the public, I want to say my name's John McAuliffe. I am a resident of District Four. I've been a resident of Millbrae for 63 years. I'm past volunteer for the city of Millbrae for about 10 years. And I think it's important, that's why I'm spending my evening with you all, for us to get involved in city politics and see what's happening, because that's who's going to be giving us--
Mr. McAuliffe, get closer to the mic. Thank you.
I do not believe it's in the best interest of the city of Millbrae to spend thousands and thousands of dollars for a new election. I believe we should go with an appointment process. We, as members of the city, we are the bosses of all of you. You represent us. And the two chairs that are empty are from people that did not represent us, and that's why they're no longer there. I think I would like to say is, why now the two representatives who want to, the two people who want to represent us at District Four are speaking up now? I don't know, maybe, why they didn't proceed with being candidates for the last election. I do believe that the individual that should be appointed to District Four is Bob Nagoyan, who won approximately 30% of the votes on the last election as a write-in candidate, which is phenomenal. I know, I've seen him walking around the district, going door-to-door, house-to-house, representing himself to the citizens. I think he deserves to be appointed as the next person for District Four who had the most votes. Many people already know him, and they voted for him. That's my, thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Gina Miranda. Followed by Nathan Chen.
Thank you, council members and folks, especially. Thank you to those candidates stepping up to serve Millbrae. I really appreciate it. My name is Gina Miranda, and I'm a longtime resident of District Two. I want to talk about what we need in our candidates, what we don't need in our candidates, and how our existing city council can help us with this. First thing we need, experience! Civic experience. This job is getting so much more complex, and civic experience is really what we need. The other thing we need is open-minded, fair, someone who's going to be open-minded, fair, civil conversations, civil engagement. That's the only way to solve problems. I am so grateful for Paul Sito to be running again for District Four, because he has all of these qualities, and I know him personally. He's helped my family back in the day when I had no idea about anything related to Millbrae politics. I saw somebody who was doing the right thing, and it sounds like he still is. As far as what we don't need, so, different skill sets, fantastic. I'm all for that. I definitely saw that in a lot of these resumes. But I'm very concerned about the anger and the divisiveness that has happened in Millbrae. It makes me, it hurts my heart. So, and I understand folks are angry. I'm angry too. But I don't sit up in our meetings and, you know, try to scream people down and try to shout out my own opinions. And that's what I've seen with this La Quinta and recall work. I've seen a lot of untruths. I've seen a lot of social media, divisive, personal attacks. These campaigns did not, are not helping us. They pushed out decent, hard-working council members that we had, and that's, those are the people that we needed. Anyway, how can the city council help? They can be balanced-- They can be balanced to unify Millbrae again. And if we do go to appointments, which I'm kind of not sure why we're doing this if we haven't even made that decision, but yes, please don't vote based on one issue. Please be democratic. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Nathan Chen. Followed by online speaker after.
Evening, council. These thoughts might be a little scattered because a lot of this is reactions to what I heard tonight. I think Ms. Wong earlier made a pretty compelling case for why going to a special election might be, might be a desirable outcome. And I'm going to suppose that you might go forward with the appointment process, and thought I would share some thoughts on what I think are important considerations. So the first one is, you know, how much do we want La Quinta to continue to be the dominating issue on the city council agenda for the foreseeable future? And I know we're still pursuing the legal case, but it seems pretty clear that three of the candidates here, Mr. Nguyen, Ms. Riley, and Mr. Kung emphasized that in their application. And I think if they, if that's something that this council wants to continue, they seem to be very attentive to that. Some other council members, candidates who kind of emphasize slightly different things. I know Mr. Sato seemed to emphasize wanting to turn the page, talking about the experience he brought, brings to the table. I was, actually felt very compelled also by Mr. Hackley's description of his background and, you know, the sort of fellow scientist-engineering person myself. I think his desire to bring a data-driven approach and a clear communication style is something that I've desperately wanted myself from city government. And then Mr. Mufara's background in development and design, you know, that's something that many of the different candidates brought forward as something that the future of Millbrae's development would be, is something that is very much on our minds. And I think having that, someone that background on council would also be very beneficial. I didn't quite figure out a way to slot in this observation, but I felt like no matter what you felt about whether the council should weigh in on foreign affairs, I thought Mr. Kung provided one of the better answers on why perhaps the city should weigh in on foreign affairs. So those are all my thoughts. If you would care to weigh them as you decide if you choose to go forward with an appointment process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chen. We have one more speaker in the chamber, so I'm going to have to ask Dan to wait up just a second. Mr. Albert Yim. Thank you.
Thank you, city council. Councilmember Schneider, council vice mayor Pappan, and Mayor Fong. I think I want to speak about appointment versus election. While I hear, you know, there are, of course, election may be representative of every single vote, and all the election, including the recall election, was a, one vote, you know, if each person vote by person. So I think technically that's a more democratic way of address, collect responses. But at the same time, you know, we're seeing that with this appointment and the period that we have given to the District Two and District Four constituents to consider running for the district council. If we are running for the special election in March, how and why would you think there are different candidates coming up than what we have tonight? And if the candidates are the same, I have full trust in the current city council to make the right decision for Millbrae. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yim. City clerk, would you please call the online speaker?
Dan Sichnik. Please accept the mute.
Thank you, council members. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me, council members?
Yes, they can. Yes.
Can you hear us?
I can now. Thank you. First of all, these are all good candidates. Any city would be lucky to be represented by most of these folks. There is no Mother Teresa here, but if you were appointing a candidate, like you'd hire a Fortune 500 CEO, you'd hire someone who had done the job before. And there appears to be one or two of those folks around. If the recall elections have taught the state of California anything, it's that Millbrae has some of the most invested voters in the state and arguably the most perfected recall factory in the state. You've got a great staff, and under the expertise of Mayor Fong, former Mayor Pappan, and former Mayor Schneider, you're accomplishing big things. An experienced three-mayor, ex-mayor council that can move quickly really is a gift. I support former Mayor Pappan and Sender Becker's goal of consolidating microdistress back into a larger, at-large representation of the city. Ex-Mayor Pappan should informally poll council members tonight to agendize that item during council communications. I could be wrong, but I would suspect former Mayor Pappan might receive unanimous council support on that. You've got four current candidates who have run or are running election campaigns as we speak. They're walking neighborhoods, building consensus. They're winning the hearts and minds of the voters. You're 27 days away from gaining two new Millbrae city council members. I'd suggest this: accept former Mayor Pappan's district elections agendization suggestion and schedule a special meeting for this Thursday to address district elections. Number two, extend your candidate application period by another five days and solicit applications from all current election candidates. Number three, appoint the current candidates your current council supports the most. And number four, schedule a special election for any openings that exist after the November 5 election results. You may have zero, you may have one, you may have two. Again, I support former Mayor Pappan's suggestion for district elections and to consolidate this back to a at-large election. And I think you'd probably have unanimous consent on that if you asked for that to be agendized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sichnik. I think that concludes all the public comment for this evening. I just want to assure the public that as we discuss this item to be agendized for tomorrow evening, there'll be opportunity for the public to speak again before the council deliberate and make a decision on what to do, whether or not we appointment, who to appoint, or special election. So be there as it may. I think that concludes the, I think that concludes the agenda for the evening. Unless other council member have any other questions, I see a hand raised from Councilwoman Anne Schneider.
I just wanted to say thank you to all the applicants and for all the work you put into your applications. Some of them were incredibly detailed, and I'm a detailed person, so I very much appreciated that. Obviously, we won't be able to appoint or whatever we choose to do. I would only encourage everyone that we do have city committees and commissions, and regardless of what happens with this process, always consider joining one of our committees or commissions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments until before I adjourn the meeting?
Thank you to all the speakers as well tonight. There was no preconceived or bias, as some people suggested here. This is a completely open process. And some of us, I received several emails, which I did not look at, but will forward to the council so that we are completely transparent in support of candidates. I don't know if everybody else got emails as well, but this is a transparent process. In other cities that have gone through this similar process, it is a way to introduce great people to the community. I don't know where we are tonight as far as an appointment or an election. I think what the mayor is suggesting is that we're going to have to really mull over a lot of personal thoughts here as we progress. The city is a great city, and exemplary of the applicants here that really went through the process. So I thank you all for that. We are limited in the timeframe that we have to respond, so we have to decide before what date?
22nd of October.
The 22nd of October, whether to appoint or have an election or do both. It just depends. You could do one for one district and one for another. So, as the clerk's going, "What? How?" So the process is still open. Some of the questions I know are difficult because everybody's new at this. One of the speakers was incorrect. Please look at the applications. People who applied do have experience within the community, and we applaud all of that. And the fact that you're here and you've applied means a lot. There are no requirements that you serve on committees or that you ran for office before, you've been appointed to something. That is not the democratic process. We've had presidents with zero experience too, but this is an, this is an open process, and the public is an important part of that. So we are listening to everybody. We greatly appreciate the discussions. And again, our questions were not easy. We're used to them because we've been up here. So we appreciate everyone taking the time to respond. There are a lot of moving parts to a city. And being a city representative, you, a lot of on-the-job learning, and we try to work together to aid whomever appears on the council and is representing the public. So once again, we want to bring the community together, and that's why we're going through this process right now. So I want to thank everybody, and I think we'll probably still be taking emails, which we will run through the city clerk so that we are completely transparent as to what we look at. But right now, I personally only looked at the applications and heard the speakers and heard the public comments. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor. I just want to, first of all, I just want to thank all the applicant tonight, all six of you, and all the public who showed up this evening. And I would not expect anything less tomorrow, and knowing that this is a committed and activated community who cares about a person next to you. And that also goes to show, you know, all six applicants tonight, commitment is what this job is required. And that's how I think we need to kind of weigh in on all the decisions that need to be made, just like any other decisions that we made, you know, on this bench. And, you know, with the public comments and all the emails that come in, as Vice Mayor has suggested a moment ago, you know, it's, it's the public input that we value and that helps guide our decision-making and, you know, how open and transparent this process must be and will be and always will be. And so, you know, with that, I wanted to thank everybody who be here tonight. And again, I don't expect anything less tomorrow, and we will be sure to continue to listen to all of you throughout this entire process. So any, unless there's any other comment, I want to adjourn this meeting this evening right around 8:01 PM. And then, and then we will have an opportunity to discuss more of it tomorrow evening promptly at 7:00 PM, I believe. Vice Mayor, you have any final thoughts?
Yeah, there will be additional public comment, but please, if you've already spoken, let's not repeat the public comments, and let's try to move ahead, giving people opportunities if they wish to proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, everybody else, and then we'll see you on tomorrow night. Meeting adjourned.